Mr. Burdick. Mr. Montfleisure. Commissioners, are we ready in town here? Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, with that, I will call the October 5th, 2020 Cass County Commissioner Ward. You order. Ms. Warden, roll call please.
Commissioner Shurling. I'm here. Brightling.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Dean.
Yep.
Pollock.
Here.
Wonderful, we have a quorum. Ms. Warden, if you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll be watching virtually Spirit Flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God. And is the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, presuming you've got a chance to review prior meeting minutes, if so, I'd look for a motion to approve or amend, please.
Move to approve.
Is there a second, please? Is there a second? Movement seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion, are you saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Those both same sign? Motion passes. The agenda, we have no amendments to the agenda. Commissioner Brightling.
I would request that Item C be amended by adding the following language. And any other property owned in the city of Davenport by Cass County.
Okay, I am wondering, let me pull that up here and get it. I think we have to pull it down, Commissioner Brightling, and we can make a simple amendment. We can't amend within consent like that, we've got to pull it down. So, I'd look for a motion to pull Item C down. And add it, we don't have any. I would add it right at the end, Ms. Warden. I would add it down.
Ms. Chairman, I shall move.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, Item C from the consent agenda, move down. Ms. Warden, let's make it number 11, or you want to make it 10? I don't care.
That doesn't matter.
Let's move it to 10, please, Ms. Warden. Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Dean, move the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of those three, are you saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Those both same sign? Motion passes. Okay, we have, the consent agenda is still at hand. Unamended or was that a motion to approve as amended totally? The agenda, okay, got it, okay, so that would present this agenda. Now, we need to move on to the consent agenda. Presume we've had a chance to review.
Ms. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second, please? Second. Moved in seconded, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollock.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Shurling.
Yes.
Brightling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners, with that, we have a time for public comment. We allow a little bit of time, two to three minutes, for anyone who's not on the agenda to speak or address the Commission and discuss any items. I don't see anyone in here or virtually, and through our audience, that wants to address the Commission. So with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 1, Property Tax Incentive Project for El Deveron. Mr. Gilmore, I see you're on the screen. You want to kick us off, and then we'll move through the regular protocol.
Yeah, thank you. What we have here is an application from El Deveron. They're applying for a payment in lieu of taxes, tax incentive, for a project at 3001 University Drive South, corner of 30th Avenue South and South University. The proposed expansion would add 51 jobs to this particular site. I should note that El Deveron, I think it was four years ago, they had about 100 employees. And every time we provided one of these tax exemptions, they have not only met the job projection, they've exceeded it. And often, the last time we thought it was going to take five years, it only took one year, that was just a year ago. The existing building is worth about 3.8 million. They are going to put a substantial amount of money into it. We estimate the building will be worth an additional 2 million. Although with all the high-tech lab space, they're putting in, I think, an investment of closer to 7 million into this building. The 51 jobs, they're all over $15 an hour, with 20 of them being between $15 and $20 an hour, 24 between $20 and $28 an hour. And seven of the jobs are over 28, including two over 35. The property tax exemption would be for 10 years. The first five years would be 100% exempt. The second five years, it would be at a rate of about 50% of the value. But there is a 2% escalator clause on that, so that would continue to grow up. If you look on page 8 of your material, you can see what they would pay in property taxes. If you don't have any questions for me, what I like to do is just turn it over to the gentleman from El Deveron. They can introduce themselves and talk about the project. Ryan Oshheim from the Greater Parkham War DTC, I believe he's also on and may want to make some comments on that. The city's tax exempt review committee does support the application, recommended approval, and it'll be on our city commission agenda at 5:15 today. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Gilmore? If not, I'll yield, I thought I saw Ryan here. There he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Wonderful, any questions for Mr. Gilmore? If not, Ryan, you have the mic, please.
I think maybe we want to hear from El Deveron first.
Do we have any owners' representatives from El Deveron?
Yes, hello, can you hear me? Mark Walsh.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I'm Mark Walsh, I'm the Chief Operating Officer and Chief Financial Officer for El Deveron. And, yeah, so this program really is an acceleration of our expansion here on 40th Avenue, where we have our main campus. For that campus, we had announced four buildings, one of which is almost completed here. Our Building 2, which is going to be the largest manufacturing site in the world of DNA and nucleic acids. Those are materials which are essential in gene and cell therapy. And in the current fight against the coronavirus as well, we have about 40 projects we're working on for our clients, providing essential materials to them so that those vaccines can come together. This particular project at University Drive is actually an acceleration for us to bring forward investments in R&amp;D buildings we have here as well, on the 14 acres. And gives us enough space, an additional space, to service the field. The field has had significant acceleration through the vaccine period, the coronavirus period here as well. And so we feel pretty strong and demand is very strong as well to accelerate some of those investments. And we found this opportunity. This opportunity brings a building. We will invest in this building, as was mentioned. And we have sort of land available if we had to build additional buildings there. That's another attractive point for us in this program. I'm certainly happy to address any specific questions you might have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for our owner? Commissioner Dean. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as always asks these questions. Do we need, do you need the pilot from the county to proceed with the project?
We, our business is doing very well. We are headquartered here in Fargo. We want to invest here in Fargo. Those programs are available, so we apply to those programs. So it's part of our overall approach. But again, we are happy that those programs are available to us, and that's why we're applying for them.
Commissioners, any further questions for our owner? If not, Ryan, you want to say anything again? You never have to feel compelled.
Yeah, no, I'll make a few comments if I can. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of El Deveron's project. And so I just wanted to, a couple of items. You know, Jim Gilmore had kind of commented a bit on the impact that they're having above and beyond, you know, some of the numbers that they shared with us in the past. You know, in, they're currently projecting to add 51 jobs in five years, going from 416 jobs now to 467. 11 of those jobs will be added next year, and that's a $2 million increase in payroll. What I think is really interesting, when you look back at the numbers that Jim had suggested, is you've got a company that in 2019 had a pilot request for the large 180,000 square foot building that they're doing down on 40th Avenue. And at that time, they had 298 employees. Keep in mind, this is one year ago. And they were projecting to add 105 jobs in five years, starting in 2021. So from 2021 to 2026, they were going to add 105 jobs to that 298. Here we are, one year later, and instead of being at 298 and adding 105 jobs, they're at 416 jobs today, which is one year before 2021. So before that timeline of that pilot even started for that 180,000 square foot building, they're already 68 employees ahead of where they said they would be next year in year one of that pilot. So this is a company, I guess my point in that is that is consistent and under-promising and over-delivering, and these are really good, high-paying jobs. I think you all know this stuff, this is not probably news to you. And I did also, one other item from the application that I thought was interesting. By year six of this pilot, and this is that 50% reduction in their annual tax obligation, they'll be paying more in year six, just under $60,000, than was paid on that property in 2019 of $55,000. And then in year 11, when the pilot is completely exhausted, they'll be paying double what they paid in, what was paid in 2019 on that property at 114,000. The only real other thing I would just kind of mention, I know, you know, we get certainly thinking about, you know, this incentive as it actually incentivizes the project. But, you know, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, as you're looking at this, would this incentive be considered, given the same consideration, for this project as it would for one that we were maybe looking to recruit to the market? And, you know, not penalize a company that's already here. And just recognizing that it takes tremendous capital to grow and scale a company. So while, you know, El Deveron is doing well, as Mark mentioned, these types of investments in specialized equipment and hiring, you know, really talented people and training talented people, that, you know, then add so much more value to our market in terms of workforce, it's a lot of capital and resources. So I think anytime we can, you know, look at this like a team sport, and there's some contribution from the public sector in supporting that growth, companies like El Deveron are going to be in a much better position to succeed over the long run. So I'll end my comments there, and again, thank you for the time to speak.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one more comment regarding Mr. Dean's concern. You know, these are, these programs that the city has offered, that helps get companies like this interested in, you know, expanding in Fargo and, you know, staying in Fargo. You know, if we don't have them, we don't know where they're going to go next time. We've seen this company expand several times, each time they've known that we've provided these types of property tax exemptions. And so you never know which companies are going to, you know, go somewhere else. They're in Madison, Wisconsin, too, and maybe they'll expand there next time. So, you know, we really don't know who's going to come anyway and who's not going to come. And but we offer this as a way to hopefully get more jobs in town, particularly these high-tech and startup companies that could be really anywhere in the world. And in some ways, it might make more sense for them to be in San Francisco or Boston, closer to the other similar industries. So again, just urge you to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any questions for Ryan? Scott? Discussion, questions, motion? Commissioner Dean, here you are. One thing I look at this is, you know, we talk about a 10-year pilot. We've been pretty consistent as a county to try to limit our pilot or our test to about a five-year support period. We have some exceptions out there, especially with housing and whatnot. And I would look at, you know, trying to maintain that best position of supporting five-year pilots if they're well-deserving, if it limited to that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one comment on that. I think, Mr. Dean, it's generally been the city's policy, too. Most of the ones that receive five years, of course, you never see because we only come to the county when they're more than five years. But ones like this, where they're very high-paying jobs and in high-tech potential growth industry, we'd make that exception to go up to 10 years, in some cases up to 15.
Commissioners, further discussion, questions?
This is Commissioner Pollock speaking.
Yes, sir.
The type of industry that they're in, which I consider the high-tech pharmaceutical end of things, is one of the areas that I would target and think is something that we want to see happen. I'm a little uncomfortable if we take a property that is paying taxes off the tax roll in order to make this happen. But that's just the way it's working out here. I intend to support this, as a matter of fact, I will move to, I will move to approve the request that's in front of us.
Is there a second, please? Is there a second? I will second the motion, Ms. Warden. Moved in seconded, discussion?
And if, Commissioner Pollock here still, and if I might continue. I think that if, that if we as a county want to clearly establish what the policy is or isn't, we should do that. But we shouldn't, since we've been, we have a history of approving these type of breaks previously, unless we change our policy, I mean, it's not fair to the applicant to have the rules changed when they come forward with the request. But if we as a county want to reassert what our policy is, let's do that. But today, I think we should approve this motion.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? From my perspective, I don't see a better company in the industry. I mean, it's always shocking to me how quickly some companies grow and how quickly some don't. And I had a friend of mine who was involved in this company now years ago. So I'm more intimately involved, not intimately involved, but intimately informed as to what they do and what they can do. And the fact they were before us asking for some incentives, and now they're back seemingly, and especially in, as far as the government timeline goes, almost instantaneously back asking because they're expanding too quickly. And again, these are $7 an hour jobs. And I think, I know what they're, I call it performa, their calculator says. These jobs tend to be even higher than that. By the time you guys are done, I sort of know what the employment market is, and if you're going to be able to find guys and gals to do these jobs, I think you're going to wind up paying more than this. So I think it's good for the community long-term, it's good for the community short-term. So I'm, that's why I second it, and I think this is the kind of company we support. Commissioner Dean, I can't disagree with any of those comments at all by Commissioner Pollock, Commissioner Peterson. The only thing is, I look at this, and it's a company that's doing very well, expanding significantly without additional tax subsidies, perhaps because of the tax subsidies we already provided previously. And I look at this, and is there a reason other than it's a really great company that the taxpayer should continue to contribute forward to additional growth and expansion and profitability of this company? That's my only concern. It's a great company, no doubt about it, it's doing really well the way it is. And we're going to help make it, you know, pay for it to do better. It's just, I don't think they need the incentive to do this. I don't think they're going to not do their project without our usually $115,000 incentive that we're providing. But it is, that's my concern. Commissioners, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Paul.
Pollock?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dean, thank you, those who do El Deveron, keep growing, keep making Fargo Moorhead area look good. And help us cure the coronavirus.
We will, thank you very much.
That was part of the motion, Mr. Wolf. You have to help us cure the coronavirus. I didn't hear that part, I would have.
We're certainly on it, for sure.
Thank you. Seriously, thank you. Okay, with that, Item 2 on our agenda, Mr. Dodd, welcome. Review, approve, request, Cass County Joint Water Resource District. Mr. Dodd, I don't know, do we have any owners in the room, owners' representatives? Just so I can have a baseline of understanding where we're getting started.
I'm aware that we have Mr. Garrus, who is representing the Germanson property, that's Item 2A. I am not aware that we have any others with us, but it'd be great to know if they are, we'd like to get.
Is there anyone on virtually that is here for Item Number 2, which is review, approve, request, City Cass County Joint Water Resource District? If so, please let us know. And my intent there is not to call you out, it's to make sure you get to the front of the line, you have to sit and wait two hours for your property to come up. So I don't see anyone acting, Mr. Dodd. So with that, let's, please, I know it's a bit cumbersome for us locally, that those of us who've been in the room in the past, but we have a number of people that may not have been here in the past. So please go through, I guess, if you would, almost exactly verbatim what we did last meeting, and I know, again, but it's not for us, it's for our friends that may not know what's going on, and our property owners that are here.
Thank you, Chairman Peterson and Commissioners. Thanks for allowing us to be back here again today. Just maybe a couple introductory comments to get us going. So today, in front of you on your agenda, we do have eight separate actions. I would just point out that Items 2C and 2D are very much related. I think we can take them separately, but it's very similar property ownership, and so we've been negotiating on those in sort of a coordinated, consolidated fashion. The reason we're here today is that the Cass County Joint Board is requesting permission from the County Commission to utilize last resort eminent domain. The Cass County Joint Board has been following a process laid out in the North Dakota Century Code that was defined through the 2017 legislation. I'll let Mr. Frederick speak to the details of that here in a moment. Maybe just to repeat a few of the things that I've shared with the Commission in the past, and new audience members might find somewhat interesting. The diversion authority is formed by a joint powers entity or is a joint powers authority. One of the members of that joint powers authority is the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. And the Cass County Joint Water Resource District has the role and responsibility for acquiring the property rights for the project in North Dakota. To accomplish that, the Joint Board has retained services from Onsted Twitchell as their legal representative. They have also retained services from multiple appraisal firms who are credentialed to do appraisals for federal projects. And they have also retained several land firms, ProSource Technologies, SRF Consulting, HDR, OTEC are some of the land firms that have been retained. Those land firms are visiting with property owners, presenting appraised values, negotiating, continuing the process as laid out by Century Code. In that process, one of the steps, if we are unable to reach a voluntary agreement, is that the Joint Board needs to ask for permission from the County Commission to utilize a quick take action. And so that's why we're here tonight, I think Sean, again, will go into more details on that. The properties that are in front of you tonight, again, there are eight actions. Three of those actions relate to properties impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach 1. And so that's the portion of the embankment that goes south and west from Horace. The Corps of Engineers has submitted their design, they're working to put the final pieces together on that design. They plan to advertise shortly and award construction next, probably be right around the end of the year or beginning of next year. The other parcels in your action for consideration tonight are parcels that are impacted by the diversion channel. And these parcels are required for construction of the diversion channel. The diversion authority is in the final steps of retaining a P3 developer that will be constructing that channel. And we need to have all the property rights in hand for the procurement process. Normally, I would ask Dan Jacobson, as Chairman of the Joint Board, to say a few words. He's not with us today, I think he's on vacation. And so I guess at this point, I'd maybe turn to Sean and see if he's able to give us an update and just give a brief reminder of the statutory process that we are following.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Appreciate your willingness to allow me to participate, again, once today, once again today. As a reminder, we've been through this a few times, but as a reminder, for the benefit of the Commission and also the landowners who are present, just a brief primer in terms of why we're here and how we got here. In 2017, the North Dakota Legislature modified the quick take process for water resource districts. And as I've notified, as I've indicated in past meetings, the rationale for that was that some water entities were rushing to utilize quick take and not really affording landowners meaningful opportunities to negotiate. That was not the case with any of the water resource districts in Cass County, but it was occurring, from what I understand, more to the west and to the north. And as a result, the North Dakota Legislature amended the North Dakota Water Resource District statutes regarding quick take authority. And really what they did is they implemented a lengthier, a little more arduous, quick take process to ensure that water resource districts conducted a fairly lengthy and meaningful informal negotiation process. And to the extent that the parties are unable to arrive at a mutually acceptable resolution, there's a fairly lengthy and very detailed formal negotiation process, requires a number of mailings, very specific contacts, certified mailings, requests to have the landowners attend water resource district meetings, those types of items. And the idea is that the legislature wanted to ensure that landowners have meaningful opportunities to negotiate, and that water resource districts would not just rush to quick take a week after notifying a landowner of a project. And I think your packets will indicate that the Cass County Joint Water Resource District has followed those procedures very closely, as Mr. Dodd has noted. And in fact, you'll see in your packets that in each case, the landowners have had multiple contacts with our land agents, multiple opportunities to negotiate with the Cass County Joint Water Resource District, both directly and with the land agents. And so the process really is working that the legislature enacted. There are a few quirks in the statute that, of course, we'd all like to see changed, but I think we are following it to the T, as you've seen in the packets that we've submitted. What I really want to do is just remind everybody that the legislature only included the County Commission for purposes of reviewing the process utilized by a water resource district and ensuring that the water resource district can verify that we followed all the appropriate steps. And to the extent that you agree that we have, then the Commission can approve the use of quick take. You don't necessarily have to step in and utilize that quick take and wear the black hat, if you will. All you really have to do is verify that the water resource district has jumped through the legal hoops in the statute in terms of the informal and formal negotiation process. Two quick things. Number one, this does not mean that the Commission is stepping into the water resource district's shoes and stepping in as the negotiator. The Commission doesn't have to agree with the value offered by the Cass County Joint Board. You do not have to agree with the appraisal acquired by the Joint Board. And ultimately, to the extent that the Commission approves the use of quick take, you do not have to necessarily even agree that the value offered or submitted to the court is what the landowner should be paid. So what I'm saying is, you don't have to give a blessing in terms of the value. You're not, we're not here to litigate or negotiate values. The only charge, the limited scope for the County Commission here today is to just determine if we've followed the steps, the negotiation steps. And again, I think the materials submitted in your packets more than verify that the Cass County Joint Board has completed all of those steps. So just for the benefit of the landowners in attendance, the objective here today is not to negotiate or to, for the Commission to inject themselves into the negotiations regarding values. And in fact, they may just disagree with the values, or they may agree with the values. That's really not relevant for purposes of the Commission's, the charge before the Commission. That's really not relevant for purposes of the commissions, the charge before the commission today. The second thing is the legal arguments. I know Mr. Garrus is present on behalf of Mr. Germanson, and he submitted a letter, I believe to the commission, or at least to Mr. Wilson, with a number of legal arguments raised regarding the Cass County Joint Water Resource District's ability to utilize quick take eminent domain. The, similar to the value issue, the Cass County Commission is not here to litigate or to render a decision, a legal decision regarding the issues raised, the legal issues raised. That is more appropriate for a court. And so of course, to the extent Mr. Germanson and Mr. Garrus on his behalf wishes to offer legal arguments, they can certainly do that to a judge when this goes before a court. And that is, that is the, that is the more adequate role for a court to determine and not for the county commission. You're, you're not here and the statute doesn't require you to render legal decisions. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that the process here today for the county is solely to determine if we follow the steps the statute requires. And I think you will find in your packets that we have, and simply to approve or deny our request to proceed with quick take eminent domain. So it's a very limited scope in terms of the county commission's obligations here today. So I just wanted to offer those as a quick primer, and of course, I'll stand for any questions the commission may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dodd or Mr. Frederick? If not, we'll just jump right into item A. Any questions? All right, Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Let's start on item A, please.
Item A in your packet references a whole series of OAN numbers. This is for the David Germanson property. And as you're aware, Mr. Garrus is here representing them. In the packet for the Germanson properties, I would just turn your attention to the map to familiarize yourself. Page six of eighty-seven shows the map, shows the parcels that are impacted. It also shows the project limits necessary for Southern Embankment Reach One. And you can see how the Southern Embankment Reach One does end up going diagonally through a few of those parcels. And then once it's further west, we do follow the town, existing township roads to try to minimize the number of property impacts in that area. The township road will remain in place, but it'll be raised up and on top of the levee in those locations. Negotiations have been ongoing with the Germanson family and Mr. Garrus for quite some time. You can see in the packet on page four and page five that there have been some counter offers that have been reviewed and considered by the joint board. I think the basis of those counter offers is related to the valuation paid for properties in the area. But you'll also note that the counter offers are requesting acquisition of the full parcels, where the need for the project is a much smaller need, the footprint of the embankment itself. I would point out that at, at some point, probably a year or so from now, we will need to be acquiring flow easements on the parcels that are upstream or south of where the embankment is. We have not yet conducted the valuation of those easements. We'd be happy to help buy them now, but we do not have the appraisal work for that completed. And so the discussions so far, from our standpoint, have tried to focus on the acquisition of what's needed for fee title. However, the counter offers have asked for full buyouts of many of those parcels. I would just point, I guess, all the letters and offers and counter offers, of course, are in your packet. Lots of information there, lots of long legal descriptions explaining what is needed. The affidavit from the land agent does include a contact list that's on page seventy-four in your packet. And so there was the appraisal work and the former offers, formal offers were presented to the property owner at the beginning of 2020, and negotiations have been ongoing for the last several months. That's a high level summary. I guess maybe I would pause there and see if you had any questions for me, otherwise maybe Mr. Garrus has.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Dodd? Not seeing any, sir. So with that, with that, owners or owners representatives, I see Mr. Garrus is here. I don't see anyone on the phone virtually, Mr. Garrus, is just you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Come on up, introduce yourself, let us know your thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jonathan Garrus of the Garrus Law Firm, and I represent, represent David Germanson. It is not my intention to make a legal argument. I don't consider myself in court, but I do believe that law does exist as it relates to this matter. And you are called upon to make a decision enforcing the law of the state of North Dakota. And I'm here to tell you that Mr. David Germanson is more than willing to sell his property. And obviously, if you have seen letters of negotiation, you would have included the September ten, twenty twenty letter, which approximately the first two pages is identified at what the values of the various items of property are and what we are prepared to sell it for. Mr. Germanson, if you look at the map, basically you're cutting right through his farm. He is, he is one of those rare individuals that rather than pick the side, they picked right through the middle of his farm. There are a couple of other tracts of land that are in darker color, ones immediately to the adjacent to the embankment and channel, to the east, and the ones in the middle, both of which we're taking out of the considerations, will, they'll ultimately have to be acquired. But I'm here to tell you that the state law wasn't being followed. And that's why I'm here in the first place, because I'm retiring. I'm trying to get out of the practice of law. And I told Mr. Germanson, I'm not going to court for him. But he said, I want to sell my land. Under the circumstances, they're cutting right through the middle of it, and I don't want to try and farm on either side of whatever they construct. And I don't know what they're going to construct, but I don't want to farm under that circumstance. So let's sell it. So I've been negotiating in good faith on behalf of Mr. Germanson for approximately six or seven months with the idea of trying to sell his property. Actually, it goes back into September of last year, try to sell his property. But in fact, Cass County Joint Water Resource District hasn't been playing fair. They haven't been doing it according to law. And that's why I'm here to tell you that there has been false attempts at negotiations. And that's what I'm objecting to on behalf of Mr. Germanson. Under the law, there's supposed to be a sixty day period of informal negotiations that has never commenced. Under the law, there is formal negotiations thereafter, and there's a sequence of time that have never been honored. I am going to submit to this commission an email, if you haven't got it already, but I'll give it to Ms. Warden, which is a letter, it's an email, May nineteen, two thousand twenty, to, to me, from Mr. Helby, who is the representative that I've been negotiating with on behalf of the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. And I would ask that it be included in your record. And essentially what it does is it says, Mr. McShane from the Onsted Twitchell Law Firm was supposed to be addressing my legal questions, and I've never received a response. And I put it, those legal positions in the letter to the Mr. Helby on the negotiations, and I kind of copied to this commission and also to Mr. Birch Burdick, and I've never heard a response to any of those legal arguments. So I'm going to assume that every one of those legal arguments say I'm correct. And when you go through those legal arguments, you'll find that Cass County Joint Water Resource District does not have any eminent domain authority whatsoever. Cass County Joint Water Resource District is not a water resource district. It is the result of a joint venture between your four Cass County Water Resource Districts that were created, and each of those four have eminent domain authority. But unfortunately for the Cass County Joint Water Resource Districts, there is a state law that says they can never, the authorized water resource district can never delegate that eminent domain authority to the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. So they don't have a project, they don't have eminent domain authority, and they have no right to ask this commission for approval to allow them to do quick take when they have no approved project. The approved project has to have a permit from the state engineers based upon all of the fully developed plans and specifications. They are non-existent. There is no permit granted to the Cass County Water Resource District to do any construction whatsoever. Furthermore, under state law, Cass County Joint Water Resource District does not have any authority, nor would any of the individual water resource districts in Cass County, to dam the Red River to the north. That is reserved to the state of North Dakota or any of its state boards. Only they can dam an applicable stream in North Dakota. They, Cass County Joint Water Resource District obviously is not a state agency. So as a result, they are not in a position where they can exercise any eminent domain, and you shouldn't grant them authority to go forward and do that when they do not have a legal basis. Section sixteen of Article One of the North Dakota Constitution does allow for the acquisition of a right of way in the nature of an easement only. The email that I submitted to Ms. Warden indicates the state of the Cass County Joint Water Resource District is seeking to acquire fee simple absolute title. That is not an easement. If they have been negotiating for fee simple, then they have not been negotiating according to the statutes or an easement acquisition. If you look at the appraisals that may or may not have been submitted, not a single one of the appraisals attempts to take the property of Mr. Germanson that is under the Cass County Road or isn't. North Dakota law says that before you can ever approve an eminent domain project where it is, or any of the land has been subjected to another public use, you must establish that the new public use is greater than the old public use. Now that comes into play in this case because Mr. Germanson owns the road under the Cass County Road that's in front of his property. You have paid for the right to put a paved surface on there for the passage of people. And it's the only purpose for which you are allowed to do anything. Under this negotiation that they've been doing, they aren't going to pay him anything. They think that they have the right, because it's Cass County right of way, to use it for a project for Cass County's Water Resource District. They don't, because North Dakota law says that you don't need it as a county road anymore. You are compelled to give it back to the landowner. So as soon as they make any claim for any land that is in the road right of way, that is Cass County or state of North Dakota or anybody else, they, first of all, have to establish that their public use is greater in value than the old public use. And secondly, they have to pay him. And none of the negotiations have ever been directed towards paying him for any of their right of way property that is explicitly accepted from the property. There is absolutely no law that would allow this body to issue an order allowing for the acquisition of a temporary easement for construction. That is not in the constitution, and there is no law that would allow you to grant that authority. I haven't talked this much through a mask, and it's starting to hyperventilate, so probably getting too much carbon dioxide. And I've identified the case law in North Dakota, which says that the right of way is actually only for passage of people, passage of travel over that property. If they want to acquire the property, they have the right, if an authorized entity has the right to do it, they can take eminent domain, have to take fee simple absolute if they take it. For right of way acquisition, it's only for passage, we still own it, and they never did it, because the negotiations were always directed towards fee simple rather than the easement interest. So they haven't done it, and they haven't included all of the property. They have put on a facade that they're going through this process all the while, fingers are crossed behind their back, they're just going through the motions, ignoring us, and then at this point in time, we're going to ask that you say you can't do it unless you can establish that you have the right to do a project, that you have the authority to use eminent domain, and you have fulfilled all of it, because they haven't done even the informal negotiations up to this point. I thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus.
If there's any questions that I can answer.
Any questions for Mr. Garrus? Commissioners, any questions? All right, sir. Thank you for your time. Mr. Dodd and Mr. Frederick, obviously we deviated a little bit from some of the responsibilities here today, but there are a couple german questions or points, maybe is a better word to use, potentially within his presentation to us. You want to talk about those for us, please?
Yeah, thank you.
And Mr. Dodd, it's you or Mr. Frederick, I don't, whoever's.
I'll maybe.
Whatever's more.
I'll maybe start on a few items, and I think Sean is probably better equipped to handle a few others as well, more of the legal nature. First off, turn your attention to page one of your packet, a little table that shows a timeline. Just, I think there was a suggestion made that we haven't followed all the statutory processes. This table, a color coded table, aims to just, in a real high level, point out the steps that we have followed, along with the dates that each notice was sent and received by the property owners. So the offer to purchase is the trigger for informal negotiations. And so you can see that was received on February nineteenth. The formal offer was then received on April twenty-fifth. So that's over two months' time there, sixty days is the requirement. Request for meeting, again, that was received on May thirtieth. Notice of intent to take possession of right of way was received on July ninth. The request for approval to take possession, so that's the letter from the joint board to the county commission, was received on August twenty-first. And then the invitation to this meeting was received on August twenty-seventh, and then here we are today on October fifth. And so those are the steps and the little table that summarizes the timeline that we have followed in this particular negotiation. The other items that Mr. Garrus talked about, I think were sort of legal in nature. I know he indicated he wasn't going to talk legal arguments, but probably best to leave some of those for a part room, but I think Sean may want to address a few of the items. So Sean, I guess I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dodd. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. There are a number of issues raised there by Mr. Garrus. I'll try to hit them. If I miss any, you can sure remind me. But one of them was that the Joint Water Resource District lacks statutory authority to utilize quick take. What Mr. Garrus is referring to is the joint powers statute under Title fifty-four of the North Dakota Century Code. But what he is missing is that there is a specific statute for joint water resource districts, sixty-one to sixteen point one dash eleven, that allows individual water boards to form joint water resource districts. That statute very specifically gives joint water resource district all the powers and authorities of an individual water board. So we do, in fact, have all the authorities under chapter sixty-one to sixteen point one, including the right of eminent domain and including the right of quick take. With regard to the permitting issue, it's true that the diversion authority does have to obtain a number of permits for the project. However, there's nothing in the water resource district statutes that requires us to obtain those permits in advance of right of way acquisition. And in fact, in most situations, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense from practical or legal perspective. But there's nothing in the statutes that require that. We understand that there are permitting requirements, and of course, the Cass County Joint Board is cooperating with the diversion authority and, and your commission and all the members of the diversion authority to obtain the requisite permits. But that is not a condition to utilizing critic eminent domain. The right of way issue regarding fee simple, first of all, the documents, I believe, that are in your packet even, indicate that we did, in fact, negotiate with Mr. Garrus's client regarding a permanent right of way. The fee simple issue, interestingly enough, was something that Mr. Garrus wanted to negotiate. We did, in our offers, indicate that we were seeking a right of way easement. So we have attempted to negotiate regarding the right of way that the statute affords. You're going to have to excuse me, I'm forgetting all of the issues that he's raised, but I guess the, in conclusion here, we have met all of the negotiation requirements under sixty-one to sixteen point one dash oh nine subdivision two, including the sixty day informal negotiation process that Mr. Dodd has, has gone through, and as well as the formal negotiation process. So if you will, we have jumped through all of the legal hoops in that statute very specifically. Are there any other legal issues that you have any questions about?
I think, Mr. Frederick, there's a lot of the nuance. I think, Mr. Fredericks, a lot of the nuance he got into is not a subject matter for us. We're not judges, nor should we be treated as judges. So I think we avoid those like the plague, if you will. The main thing is the process, have we followed the process? And I think that that is the question at hand right now. So commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dodd, who are legal counsel? If not, our discussion, further questions, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak.
One moment, Commissioner Pollak. I'd like to offer Mr. Garrus the mic one more time, if you have a question or concern, please, to make sure everybody's being heard.
The submission to Ms. Warden starts off with a March eighteen, twenty-twenty, at two fourteen P.M., to Mr. Helvey from myself. Mr. Helvey, Mr. Germanson and I would be meeting tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, and we expect to respond to you shortly thereafter. One question that does pop up is, are you seeking an easement or fee simple title? To which Mr. Helvey responded Wednesday, March eighteenth, at two sixteen P.M. Mr. Garrus, with this informal offer, we are seeking fee title, but we can work on other options should your client desire. They have always been negotiating for a fee simple. That was their idea, not mine.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrus. Mr. Dodd, anything, comments?
Commissioners, I think what Mr. Fredericks pointed out in his comments earlier in the formal offer letter, we do explain that, I'm trying to page through this here, if I can. In the formal offer letter, page eleven of eighty-seven, in the opening paragraphs, this is the April twenty-second letter, we do say that
And that's in our packet.
That's in your packet, page eleven of eighty-seven, in the packet for this Germanson property owner. In that first paragraph, the district must acquire right-of-way and a temporary easement over your property. So we understand that there are some legal differences between fee simple and the permanent right-of-way easement, but in our formal offer letters, we do very clearly indicate that we are working to purchase a right-of-way. I think Mr. Helvey's comments were made via email that, per the informal negotiations, we would prefer to buy fee title, however statutorily we are only able to acquire a permanent right-of-way easement. And Chris and Sean can maybe talk about more of the legal differences of that, but I just wanted to point out that we have been trying to negotiate for the permanent right-of-way easement, because that's all technically we're able to acquire via the statute.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodd. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I saw a couple of us moving to the mic. Commissioners, any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak.
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last resort eminent domain under Section sixty-one, sixteen-point-one-dash-oh-nine, Paragraph two of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for right-of-way and temporary easement regarding OININS five-zero-zero-four, five-zero-zero-nine, five-zero-ten, five-zero-eleven, five-zero-twelve, nine-zero-five-four, nine-zero-five-five, and nine-zero-five-six.
Is there a second, please? Moved in second, and any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that by us taking this step, it allows the process to continue, and it will provide an answer to the questions that Mr. Garrus has brought forth, and will give resolution for Mr. Germanson. And I would like to applaud Mr. Germanson and Mr. Garrus for working with the Cass County Joint Water Resource District in this, even though they didn't come to an agreement. At least they've had dialogue to try to move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any more comments or discussion? Any more discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Sherling.
Yes.
Motion passes. And again, as Commissioner Pollak said, thank you to everyone involved in the team, and landowners and representatives to hopefully see this thing through. Item two B, Mr. Dodd.
Yes, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Item two B in your packet is related to OIN seven-one-seven and nine-seven-three-two. This is the David Hockum properties. In your packet, there is a thirty-five-page packet related to this property. Turn your attention quickly, just to orientate yourself. Page five shows the location of these parcels. They are immediately west of the Eagle Run area, west of the Cheyenne Divergent Channel, just north of Thirty-second Avenue. As you can see, there are two parcels that are impacted by the right-of-way needed for the diversion channel. And on page four is a brief negotiation summary of where we've been and where we are today. As you read through the negotiating summary, unfortunately, we have had very limited contacts with this property owner, starting back several months ago. Offers were presented, there was challenges in getting contact from the property owner, there's been mailings that have been sent and received, and the certified mailings are in your packet. But to date, the property owner has been unresponsive to any of those requests to reach, to reach out, whether that's phone calls, letters, other contact attempts, including, you know, door knocking. And so unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot to tell you about how the negotiations have been ongoing, because it's primarily been one-sided. We've been sharing information with the property owner, but have not had some, any reciprocations. So we don't have a counteroffer. You can see the appraised value is just over a million dollars, and that's kind of the status of where we are with negotiations. Pat Roberts with ProSource has been our land agent dealing on this acquisition. Pat is with us virtually today. If you have any questions for him or himself, we'd be happy to help answer those.
Mr. Dodd, I noticed that, too, if I may, if I jump in here right away. This may sound like a silly question, but are we talking to the right person?
Um, there, I guess.
Did I get my question, right? I mean, if he's totally, completely non-responsive, are we actually talking to the right person? I realize that's a dumb question, but I feel compelled to ask a dumb question.
I think that's a fair question, and in fact, I asked myself or our team that question as well. You will notice that we do have the return receipt mailings that have been signed for by the property owner, and so I guess I take that as, and have to believe that this property owner is the right person. I can, I guess, anecdotally tell you, I don't live too far from where Mr. Hockum lives. I walk my dog by his property, and there's activity there, and I've never met the guy myself, but I can tell you that there is activity at the property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would like to make a motion.
Please do, sir.
Yeah. Zoom background, there you go. I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last resort eminent domain under Section sixty-one dash sixteen dot one, dash oh-nine, Sub Two of the North Dakota Century Code, to take easements for a right-of-way regarding OIN seven-seventeen and ninety-seven thirty-two.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sherling.
Yes.
Breitling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Motion passes. Items, you said C and D are linked?
C and D have been, yes, they're linked.
Well, we should treat them separately, I believe, right?
The ownership interest is a little bit separate, and so I think it's probably appropriate to treat them separately.
Thank you. Mr. Dodd, please.
In your packet, item two C on the agenda is OIN eleven-eighty-six. This is the Michael and Bonnie Fosse property. I would just point your attention, the OINs eleven-ninety-one and eleven-ninety-three are owned by Michael Fosse, the husband and wife. Lisa Kildee has been negotiating with the Fosses. Lisa's here with us in person today. We have had quite a bit of negotiations with the property owner. We've been going back and forth on, you know, different options. The property owner is represented by the Rinkin Noonan Law Firm. As you can see on page four, they are working to get their own appraisal. As of just a few days ago, they had not received their appraisal as of yet, but I believe we are still waiting for that, and so hopefully that might help trigger some negotiations. Otherwise, you can see on page five, the parcel eleven-eighty-six is impacted primarily by a road realignment that needs to be realigned so it can be construed, so the road and bridge can be reconstructed over the diversion channel. And so the impact on parcel eleven-eighty-six is relatively minor compared to impacts on some of the other parcels. The appraised value of this is eighteen thousand, and again, we have not received it from the property owner yet. The other thing I'd like to point out for your attention is the affidavit from the land agent, and in particular, on page thirty-three is the contact log. So you can see that the contact with this property owner began in late twenty-sixteen. There was some limited conversations in early twenty-seventeen, and then with the injunction and things on the project, that was largely suspended until just over a year ago, in August of twenty-nineteen, the conversations resumed, and we've been trying to negotiate on the acquisitions since that time. Nothing else that I have to add, but I think Lisa's here, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, discussion, a motion?
Commissioner Steen. I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last resort eminent domain under Section sixty-one dash sixteen dot one, dash oh-nine, Sub Two of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right-of-way regarding OIN eleven-eighty-six.
Is there a second, please? Moved in seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, check my monitor, make sure, Commissioner Sherling, Commissioner Pollak, okay, we're good. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Steen.
Yes.
Sherling.
Yes.
Breitling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item D, two D, please, Dodd.
Item D, I guess, is very much the same situation as I noted earlier. The negotiations on all three of these parcels have been consolidated. Our land agents have been talking with the property owners. It just happens that there's two separate ownership interests, and so I guess to spare you the details, I would just say this is the same as what we just talked about. Any sense of anything different? I guess, maybe if I may, the one thing I would point out, there are a few structures on parcels eleven-ninety-three and eleven-ninety-one. That's on page five of the packet. The property owner is currently working to remove his, some of his personal property from those parcels, and so there's, you know, some positive direction heading in that regard. We hate to get into the situation where we may have evictions and things, so there is some positive action in that regard, but not settled on an appraisal.
I do notice your call log, all properties are discussed simultaneously, is what I'm seeing. So you had the three noted, and, okay, thank you. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak.
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last resort eminent domain under Section sixty-one, sixteen-point-one through dash oh-nine, Paragraph two of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right-of-way regarding OINS eleven-ninety-one and eleven-ninety-three.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pollak.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Sherling.
Yes.
Breitling.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item E, Mr. Dodd.
Item E in your packet is related to OIN five-zero-two-four. This is the Julie A. Otis Revocable Living Trust. It is a parcel that is impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach One. So again, that is the furthest south and west portion of the Southern Embankment. You can see a map showing the project impacts on page five of forty-one in your packet. As you can see here, there's an existing county road on the west edge of this parcel, and that county road will become the dam after construction. And to allow that, the Corps has requested that we obtain some property rights along the edge of that road and into the field, roughly seven acres of fee title and a little over three acres of temporary construction easement. We have appraised that, we have presented the property owner with the appraised value. More recently, we have settled with an adjacent, not immediately adjacent, but a neighboring property owner for a very similar impact. We have settled with the neighboring property owner at seven thousand dollars an acre, which is slightly higher than the appraised value of fifty-five hundred, and we have made that seven thousand dollar an acre offer to all of the property owners along this area where we have sort of small sliver takings along the existing roadways. We have not yet received a response or heard back from that offer, but that offer has been made, and as you see there on the negotiating summary on page four, the landowner has repeatedly expressed that they're not interested in participating in the negotiating process. So that's a summary of where we are with negotiations. Jamie Wark is the land agent. Jamie is here with us tonight as well, with the Vikings mask on, celebrating their win yesterday. And with that, I would stand for, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Steen. I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under Section sixty-one dash sixteen, one dash oh-nine, Sub Two of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right-of-way, temporary easement regarding OIN five-zero-two-four.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Sherling.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Item F.
Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet, item F is OIN five-two-one-four. This is the Martin and Karen Kraus Living Trust et al. In your packet, there is a forty-one-page summary of the packet, including all the information. This property is directly west of the one that we just discussed, so it's on the other side of Counter Row thirty-six, and the east portion of this property is impacted by that road, the levee that will be constructed along Counter Row thirty-six. There's a map on page five, and the negotiating summary is on page four. As you can see on page four, there's a brief discussion. The appraised value was about nineteen thousand dollars, again, just over three acres of fee title taking, and one and a half acres of temporary construction easement. The property owner had countered at ten thousand dollars an acre. We have reviewed this parcel, as well as many of the neighboring, with the joint board, and presented a counteroffer back to them at seven thousand dollars an acre, and at this point, the power of attorney has not been satisfied with that offer, and so that's generally where we're at. Jamie, any other updates on this one? No? She can just head, no, that's the summary of where we are with negotiations. Again, the contact log is quite extensive. You can see page thirty-seven in your packet, starting back in December of last year. Stand for any questions.
Commissioners, questions, discussion, motion? Commissioner Breitling.
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under Section sixty-one dash sixteen dash one point zero-nine, Parents Two Close Parents, of the North Dakota Century Code, taking easement for a right-of-way and temporary easement regarding OIN five-two-one-four.
Second. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sherling.
Yes.
Breitling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Steen.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item G.
Chairman, Commissioners, on your agenda, item two G is related to a series of OIN numbers, all represented by the Janet Wanzick et al. property owner. There is a fifty-four-page packet related to this property. There is a fifty-four-page packet in your median agenda. The map to orientate yourself for these parcels is on page six of that packet. Few things to point out, the agenda identifies five OIN numbers. The map identifies three parcels. OIN eight six seven two and eight six seven three are immediately south, they're the quarter sections immediately south of eight six seven five and eight six seven four. At one point in the process, we did have temporary easement that we were seeking on eight six seven two and eight six seven three. The temporary easement has, is no longer required on those parcels, but the appraiser and evaluation does consider some severance impacts to those parcels, and so that's why they are listed in the action, but not specifically identified because they're not directly impacted by the project, by project footprint. On page four and five of the packet is a negotiating summary, and you can see there on the negotiating summary, in the middle table on page four, you can see the OINs eight six seven two and eight six seven three refer to three hundred and three acres of severance. It equates to a hundred and ten thousand dollars and change that was in the appraised value. The property owner has originally had a counteroffer of a million dollars more than our offer, so we were at just shy of seven hundred thousand. They had, they had a counteroffer of one point seven million. Since then, they have revised their counteroffer. That counteroffer was presented to the Cass County Joint Board in late September and considered, but rejected by the joint board. I would point out there that most of the negotiations, if not all of them, have centered on the parcels in section nine, and the property owner and their representatives have chosen not to negotiate on the nine seven four seven parcel in section ten because, in their words, we're just too far apart to negotiate. That's a summary of where we are with negotiations. Mr. Helvey is here with us today. He's been our land agent dealing with this, and both Ken and I stand for any questions.
Commissioners, questions for our team? Motion?
We're all waiting for a clarification of what actually we're making a motion. We got this includes this, doesn't include this, have this to crack this, and we've got one sheet of paper. Perhaps you would might want to clarify that, Eric.
Sure. The requested motion is accurate. It identifies all five of the OINs. I wanted to draw your attention to the map only showing three, and the reason it only shows three is because the impacts on eighty-six seventy, basically the south half of section nine, the impacts there are severance impacts, and so the appraiser considers what's called a larger parcel. So in the appraiser's opinion, there is some minor severance impacts to those to the south half of section nine, and so they are included because we are paying dollars for them, but they're not directly impacted by the project itself.
Commissioner Steen, Chair. I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section sixty-one dash sixteen dot one dash oh nine sub two of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for a right-of-way and temporary easement regarding OINs eight six seven two, eight six seven three, eight six seven four, eight six seven five, and nine seven four seven.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Scherling.
Yes.
Brightling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Item H, Mr. Dodd.
Chairman Commissioners, in your packet, item two H is OIN eight six seven eight. This is the Alan and Don Pritchard property. Pat Roberts with Prosource has been our land agent negotiating on this. On page six of thirty-five, you can see a map showing the impacts on this property. I would just point out on, on page four and five, that there is a negotiating summary. Joint Board has approved a purchase agreement with this property owner for the property rights that are needed. That purchase agreement is with the property owner's attorney, and they have been reviewing. I'm optimistic that we will reach a resolution on that, but at this point, we don't yet have ink on the purchase agreement, and so since the timing was right on this one and it was on your agenda, we felt that we better bring it forward just in case something falls through. But I would just, you know, again, summarize on page four and page five, we have had quite a bit of discussion and, you know, had offers and counteroffers back and forth, taken a few things to the joint board. We did end up agreeing. The joint board has agreed on the purchase agreement, and it's with the property owner's attorney at this time.
So it's a matter of a signature?
Pardon?
It's a matter of a signature, essentially?
Um, I, there may be a few comments, some feedback. Generally, we've been able to work through those types of things, and so I, I don't want to jinx us by saying it's a signature, but generally speaking, I'm optimistic that we'll get this.
Fair enough. Commissioners, this should be the easy one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak.
Commissioner Pollak, please.
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last resort eminent domain under section sixty-one dash sixteen point one dash oh nine slash two of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for the right-of-way and temporary easement regarding OIN eight six seven eight.
Is there a second, please?
Okay.
Seconded, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Scherling.
Yeah.
Brightling.
Yes.
Motion passes, completing item number two on our agenda. Consultant team, any more comments? Or no, rock and roll, okay? Mr. Dodd, please, yes.
Thank you for your time and consideration. We, this was our fourth time in front of you. It appears that we're going to have a few more requests in front of you throughout the fall here. We're working hard to try to get as many of these settled as possible. We do have, as noted here tonight, and with a few coming up, we have property owners who are getting their own appraisers, appraisals, and, you know, we'll be considering that information in our negotiations, and I'd like to bring as few of these forward to you as possible, but appreciate your willingness to hear us out.
I agree with what you just said. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodd. Thank you, Mr. Frederick, close view online.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, and the rest of the team is in the office here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On our agenda, given regarding diversion, Mr. Benson. What, shake and bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. It's a great day.
It is. Great day to be an engineer in Cass County, Mr. Benson.
Shake and bake, all right. For this agenda item, following the two thousand nine and the eleven floods, we acquired some land along the Red River, south of Conroe sixteen, using FEMA funding that de-districted that property. Working through our congressional delegation, we were able to change the federal law to allow our flood diversion project to be authorized to be constructed over those deed-restricted properties. Working with the City of Fargo and Nathan Warboom and their engineering staff, we've coordinated with FEMA, and the attached agreement is agreement with FEMA to allow us to construct the flood diversion, flood control project on top of those deed-restricted properties.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This is mostly housekeeping, as the Commission probably knows, but it is fairly incredible how quickly we got this done, given the, the scale of what this probably really means, right? After the federal government adjusts something like this is not unheard of, but it's cumbersome to a period of twenty or thirty years in some cases, so this was great. I'm, I was shocked that it got done, honestly, this quickly and sufficiently and easily. So thank you, Mr. Benson. Thanks to the team that you assembled to work with us, and thanks obviously to our friends in DC, too, so. Commissioner Steen.
Thanks. Authorized the, I move to authorize the Commission Chair to sign the agreement of clarification with North Dakota Department of Emergency Services and the Federal Emergency Management Agency Regarding Deed Restrictive Parcels Owned by the County to Allow the County to Construct, Operate, and Maintain a Flood Control Divergent Project on These Properties.
Is there a second, please? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Scherling.
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion passes. Item four, County Highway eighty-one MOU. Mr. Benson, you're on again.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for this next item, several months ago, we had MOU with the City of Fargo regarding a flood control project where they were crossing Conroe eighty-one, and it was brought up. What's the turnover process? And so that really spurred a continued discussion with the City of Fargo Engineering Department and my staff, and the development of this MOU. In the meantime, there's also been a large warehouse facility that's began construction along this stretch of road, and has now been annexed into the city limits, and we foresee that this segment from Forty Fifth Avenue, formerly known as Conroe twenty, up to Sixty Fourth Avenue, where the City of Fargo and West Fargo Parks has a softball complex, that whole segment of that road, you know, over the next three to five years will most likely end up coming into the city limits. So this MOU really outlines a kind of phased approach to turning over components of the road as the city annexes that property is long there and continues to develop. As they develop, things like additional infrastructure regarding utilities, access, and those things will be taken over, and then ultimately additional road construction, turn lanes, those things will be needed. I think kind of critical to the county is that we're really going to limit our expenses to standard maintenance. We'll continue to remove the snow, maintain the signs, do striping on the, on the pavement, and then ultimately, if, if we turn this over before we do any larger road project, we would agree to pay for an amount up to what we would have paid for if we would have done an asphalt overlay, about a four-inch asphalt overlay, which is what we've kind of projected about in the next five to ten years to do. And that's similar to what we've done on other projects that we've turned over to the City of Fargo, including Twelfth Avenue and Fifty Second Avenue last year. So I'm guessing it would be, end up being somewhere at, for a two-mile stretch, less than a million dollars, whether we end up paving it ahead of time or if we, if we paid the City of Fargo as part of a turnover process.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Any questions, Commissioners?
You indicated this was consistent with what we've done on Twelfth Avenue north and Fifty Second Avenue south.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brightling, yes, that's what we've done in the past.
Commissioner Steen. I read through this, and not knowing that your last comment there, it struck me as odd that, you know, we're going to turn this over to the city and yet, or we do it, we're going to make these improvements to it, which I think is rather odd, we're going to make improvements to City Street. In the meantime, I love the way they worded this, but in no event will Cass County be prevented from entering access, accessing or removing snow from this stretch of County Road eighty-one. In the event Cass County is able to address the snow conditions in advance, the city, great wording, I love that, but anyway, it's.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no kidding. It just seems odd to me, but again, if this is consistent with how we've been doing it, I guess I'm not going to object too much, but it just seemed very strange that we would do this. The other thing, on number eleven, I thought there's point number eleven here, the term says this agreement will automatically renew for success of periods of twenty years unless County Road eighty-one is annexed into the city. Is that standard? Twenty-year extensions on agreements? It seems odd to me. It seems like after twenty years, should address it again, not just automatically extend it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Steen, to the, to your second question here on the twenty-year term, I think, you know, we looked at that as, um, that, I'm just reading this one more time, but.
If the extension's for twenty-year terms, it would, it was not completed. It just seems that if it's still twenty years and something's not happening, we should probably readdress.
Right.
The situation, not just automatically extend another twenty years of agreement. That's just my thought. I would.
I think if, if, I think it was more in there if, for some reason, there was some catastrophic, you know, there's no longer, the development that started out there stops and we don't have future development in twenty years, we're, we're still, you know, this is still in place. To your, to your first question on the agreements, for example, south of County Route of I ninety-four on Cheyenne Street, formerly Conroe seventeen, when that was turned over in early two thousand as West Fargo started to develop the Eagle Run area, in lieu of us doing an asphalt overlay, we just paid the City of West Fargo, I believe it was somewhere in a three to five hundred thousand dollars at that point. And it's, in our, in our past agreements, it's always been that, you know, we've said, hey, we can turn this over to you, and we can do a quick asphalt overlay, and then just, you know, then it's yours, or if, if you're going to tear out that road anyway and reconstruct it to an urban four lane, why would we want to waste our money doing that? Instead, we would give you that, the equivalent of that asphalt overlay put into a new curving gutter road.
Thanks. I'm still not comfortable with the renewal piece on this, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's standard language in any of your agreements.
It's Ken Pollak interrupting Commissioner Steen.
It's okay.
Would, would you be comfortable if we just kept the first sentence in paragraph eleven and struck the, struck the rest?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I move approval of this proposed agreement, with the exception that paragraph eleven, we will only use the first sentence.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Scherling.
Yeah.
Brightling.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Benson, you got a busy day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, my next one. Back in July at a road advisory meeting, we discussed that we'd be acquiring the lot in Davenport to, to continue to, to replace our existing facility with a new upgraded facility. We had started the process of, of, um, working towards getting a contract for the construction in addition for that new facility, but we were, we were holding off until we had, had gone through the property acquisition. We are now in the final step of that property acquisition. We're just waiting to close. We should be closing in the next week or so, and to move this forward so that as soon as we close on that property, we can have the contractor start concrete work before it gets too cold this fall. I'm asking to authorize the quote from RJS Building Systems, I think, for, for the construction of this, of this facility.
Was there approved budget number on this? I want to say it was one forty or one thirty, but I can't remember. Was it one twenty? It was one twenty, but I can't remember either. One four six, I mind. Mr. Rob, Lisa, are you on? I see that you're on, but.
I believe we had, between the, the land and, and the building, we had closer to four thousand dollars, not a lot.
Wasn't that much? This is just for the building.
This is just.
This is simply, excuse me, remodeling.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak.
Yes, sir.
Um, the question really is for, for Jason, and that is, as I look at this, it looks like it's kind of piecemeal, like, like someone else is doing the concrete work, but I don't re, I didn't really kind of understand that when I look at these documents. It was clear on the bidder who didn't get the job, but on the bidder who got the job, who's doing the concrete and, and the other site work?
RGS is a GC.
Say it again?
The bidder is the general contractor, so he'll do everything holistically. Maybe line item, what they'll do is give you a schedule of values. I didn't see that. I saw the breakdown that's posted, but that one builder will be doing everything for us as a general contractor.
I can't hear you very well.
But that one contractor will be doing everything for us as a general contractor. So he's not, it's not piecemeal, it's holistic.
Okay. The number that we're, that we're asked to approve is for everything?
Yes. Mr. Benson, yes?
Verify. It is for everything?
Commissioner Steen.
Thank you. It is for everything, electrical, concrete, everything else, that's not how I read this either. I read this for the building and then the rest of it would be added. Does not, I mean, on page, PDF page three does not include permits, fees, concrete, concrete engineering, soil testing, plumbing, heating, or mechanical. So I'm confused then by the last comments. And we're not paving anything. We're plumbing, heating, and mechanical?
We'll have a concrete floor.
Have a floor in there. So I'm confused. Oh, it's, so it's concrete foundation design, so structural engineering. But I think Mr. Pollak's question was, what about the rest of it? Heating, electrical, mechanical? I think that's why I understood Commissioner Pollak asking that question. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Benson?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pollak and Steen, I don't have that, I thought I had a copy of the full document, if you only have the purchase order. Without having that in front of me and it's at the top of my head, I don't, I, I think.
Blaine is on, he's listening, I don't know if he had more information or?
Blaine is, yes, back at foreign friends.
I don't know if you heard that. Blaine?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so RGS's quote was for to do pour the concrete for the foundation, that'd be the foundation wall, and then to construct the building. The heating and the electrical would be between Gene, he would help do some of the heating part of it, and then the electrical work we would have to get done separately.
Okay, so it's not fact.
Okay, well.
Commissioner Pollak, if I may, I'm seeing what Commissioner Pollak and Commissioner Steen are seeing. If you look on page, it specifically calls out permits, architectural fees, doesn't matter, doesn't matter, inspection fees, that's part of your permit fees, but then here's the tickle, concrete and concrete engineering, well, that engineering part aside, but this simplifies that there is no concrete wall, meaning someone else is putting in foundation for the supplier, and I'm guessing, I've worked with Rick before, I'm guessing he just cut and paste of this from another proposal, and you probably got stuck in that contract by accident. I know Rick for twenty years, so that's my guess. It would be really nice to know what we're approving before we approve it, honestly. Yeah, I would say if the commission would allow me to be so bold as to say, let's table this for two weeks, Mr. Benson, get a clarification, make sure we know what RGS is actually building for us. I think we're going to find it's the whole package, and I think we're going to find that the contract is not a couple of quotes in it, that clearly I missed, I just, like I said, I worked for twenty years, so I didn't even blink. Does that affect your schedule at all?
No, Mr. Chair, and Blaine, unless you've got a comment, I think we can work with that.
Well, we can't sign this, there's no concrete.
We'll just have it expedited, really the critical piece is that concrete work.
Do we need a motion to?
We should have a motion to table it and then.
So moved.
Thank you, a second. And any objection, Commissioners? All right. We stand. Commissioner Pollak, go ahead, sir.
I said not by me, I don't object. I think we need to have the complete package here.
Okay. Item five, we'll come back in two weeks, Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be back up here for item ten.
Awesome. We'll be waiting with bated breath, Mr. Benson. Item six, coronavirus update, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, main item for you to consider today on the COVID nineteen coronavirus update, you've talked a number of times recently about purchasing iPads, keyboards, and related equipment for your use, the five of you as a board, and again, this is certainly COVID-related because we're all meeting more virtually these days than we are in person, and having county devices that all of you are using and bringing a uniformity to them would improve our network security and also our IT department's ability to provide service when needed. I was asked to, by Mr. Schmaltz, to have a little show and tell as part of, pardon part of this display, and this is a large-size iPad, it is a hard-surface keyboard as well, and I am assuming beyond that, it comes with all of the standard, that I would say that the keyboard also functions as a fairly heavy-duty protector as well, that comes with all of the related equipment and devices, easy, as easy to manage as a surface, it's actually a little smaller than the surface I have. So that's the one item for your consideration under the update today. I would made a note in there as well that, you know, we've had, there've been some discussions between the courts and court security deputies of requirements of masks within courtrooms that has been updated since our last meeting. That is, as I understand, a bit on a judge-by-judge, case-by-case basis as far as what is enforced within the courtrooms, but that was simply an update that I would bring to you as well as a reminder that we do have a mask policy for the annex and the courthouse as a whole. Again, that's an update, I can answer any additional questions you may have, but the action item is consider the purchase of five iPads for the five of you for your use with the iPads and accessories, total costs not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Commissioners, Commissioner Steen, just a quick comment on that, you know, obviously, from my previous comments, I'm in favor of this, I'd rather not have all this county stuff on my computer, et cetera, et cetera, I'd rather not have to bother Terry with how my computer's not working, and so he's got to look at Lenovo versus, you know, whatever else we're looking at. The other piece that at our very last meeting with the diversion authority, Joel Paulson and another person came up to me and they are talking because of the volumes of paper that we're consuming at these diversion meetings, they would like to switch to something electronic, they are talking iPads. And so my question, in fact, that specifically asked Terry, we're on the same platform as the diversion authority, correct?
Correct.
Terry, can you come up, sorry? So our virtual friends can hear you.
Correct. We are on the same platform.
We have this great county computer, the iPad, we're going to use that for the diversion authority as well, we don't have to duplicate that. And the implication was, this is what you're getting at, Commissioner Steen, the implication was they're going to buy us an iPad too, which is silly.
Yeah, I know.
So we can use the same one, that's what I'm getting at, we don't have to worry about.
That's what I'm trying to get.
But I'm telling you, the implication, Commissioner Steen, is rock solid on this. Oh, you'll each get one. No, we frickin' won't, because I'm not going to blow another two grand when we have an amazing piece of technology we have now.
Yeah, we'd be able to use that. Now, there's some other things going on with the diversion, I don't have them quite worked out yet with them yet, but kind of meeting with them on Wednesday.
Okay, just make, just, and I'm sure Commissioner Steen is spot on, but just make sure they're not going to do that for us. Do you have these?
No, I already brought that up, and I brought it up with the City of Fargo and Clay County, and they're all in agreement.
Okay, that makes me so happy, because Commissioner Steen heard the same thing I did, and Mr. Wilson and I briefly discussed it, I just threw my hands in, you're going, not, this is getting crazy now, thirty-five computers at the cost of eighty-five million apiece, this is nuts. Mr. Wilson, please, your thoughts?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I promise you that the end goal is single device that you can use for multiple organizations that you have responsibilities and to and need to review a plethora of information for, it will be a coordinated effort.
Okay, so let me, I know we all want to kind of hustle through this, but, so if, thank you for jumping up here, Terry, you're anticipating my question. So if the diversion authorities be buying iPads for other teams, do we want the diversion authority to buy us an iPad in lieu of county expenditures? Because would it make sense for all of it to be holistic in terms of Clay, Morehead, if, and I don't know who is or who isn't, but you have one block bought by the diversion authority and then we utilize those county commissioners, try to save county tax figures.
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, I don't know if that's a good idea, really, because you're kind of running the same issue with City of West Fargo and Clay County. Clay County has Chromebooks, West Fargo has surfaces, Fargo has something else, right? So it's really kind of hard to get on the same platform if you try to achieve that thing where you're only carrying around two devices. I'm sure Mary Mahoney doesn't want to carry around an iPad and a laptop at the same time.
I don't care about you, I'm thinking about us. I carry around one, you know. Okay.
Everybody's on a different platform, so it's not like, I mean, the diversion authority, they initially started talking about that, buying everybody, and I kind of talked them out of that.
Okay, because obviously, you know, philosophy, I'm struggling with this expenditure, you know that, because I just think that investment needs to be done, you guys, not in us, but just in the printing alone, I've been joking about printing for years, you could buy any of these things by now, it's not even packaged printed anymore, but, okay, so yeah, so we're not going to have redundancy in two or three stations, it doesn't make any sense for us to waste the diversion to buy them because of our consistency internally at the courthouse is more prudent or more logical than having that uniformity, meaning if there was Cromes or whatever it's going to be.
Correct.
Okay.
And where I'm trying to get with the diversion is basically have the same, I'm trying to leading, pushing them towards is using Teams to store all the documents, and that way you just flip between diversion and Cass County and that's where I'd like to.
Commissioner Sherrling?
Thank you, and I guess that's what I was going to kind of ask Terry about, too, is even at the City of Fargo, I'm on a couple of different boards that get handled over there, and it seems like we use different platforms for meetings, and I do platform, you know, another one with Canadian government, and, you know, they all seem to want to use a different search engine, and, you know, none of it's consistent, so it'd be really great if we could log into any kind of a board meeting that we needed to on any given platform.
I just wanted to add, I mean, if you want to bring that up to, you know, the diversion authority, kind of tell them your feedback would probably help.
We'll do that.
Yes.
Commissioners, any further discussion or your thoughts?
Commissioner Steen, I'd like to move to authorize the purchase of iPads and related equipment at a cost of twelve thousand using CARES funds, act funds to cover the expense. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, let's see, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Steen?
Yes.
Sherrling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Guess that means I won't be stealing your computer anymore, Mr. Wilson, so get used to that, man. Continue, please, anything further on coronavirus, sir?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, with that, item seven, Northwater Fair Delegates, I'm going to jump on this one, I think, right? Yeah, so if we recall, we appoint a fair delegate every couple of years, and we typically, for my, we used to go up every year, but for my suggestion, whenever that was years ago, we went to every other year, and then last year, if you recall, we had Mr. Schultz represent us, and he never did give us a report back, he quit too soon, so he kind of went up and then he quit. So what I would like to do is, if I were to be so bold, I will continue to be that representative, that's fine, but I would then work with our fair board, Red River Valley Fair, just as we did before, where we send a commissioner up once every two or three or four years, with the other years being a report from our friends at the Red River Valley Fair Association coming back and virtually now, of course, or whatever, when we get back to real life and normalcy, they would just come to the commission, give us a report and find out we missed, because the expenditure, I recall sending myself up there between mileage and a hotel, was like nine hundred dollars, and obviously labor-wise, I'm free, but nine hundred dollars is not a prudent expenditure, it's thirty dollars every year just to go to a fair board, even though it is an important thing, when we can have a representative, I think, anyway, with an admirable job, giving us a report, saving us almost a grand every year, and again, once every three or four years, one of us goes up or someone goes up, so that's my thoughts, Commissioner Steen.
I move to appoint Chairman Peterson to represent the Cass County Commission as a delegate for the Northwater State Fair Association.
Second.
Is there a second? Move in second, Commissioner Sherrling, I see your hand is up.
Yes, just a question, you know, a lot of, a lot of this COVID nineteen has created opportunities for us to perhaps continue to do virtual meetings, so, you know, that may be an answer, you know, for us would be to have a commissioner continue to go annually, but just do it virtually.
Commissioner Sherrling, if you could keep my tiny bald head nodding on the virtual screen.
Yes.
That was me agreeing with you, and I think that this is, you know, we can take some silver linings from this pandemic, and I think that's one of them that we've been forced to evolve the way we do meetings. So yeah, I'm all for it, and again, it's not to discount, as I said before, how important our relationship with our friends in the state are, but just we have more prudent things to spend that kind of money on an annual basis, I think. Any further discussion? If not, let's do a roll, just for fun, please, Miss Word.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sherrling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Motion passes, Mr. Robb, pleasure, flood diversion transfer sales tax.
You have the report in front of you, and I think the main thing on it is that, you know, our revenues remain a lot stronger than we thought they would be. So, you know, our year-over-year, we're at almost six percent, that's certainly good, and I have a motion there to transfer ninety-four percent of the money from the last month into the diversion authority.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to authorize the county finance director to transfer one million, three hundred seventy-nine dollars, eight hundred and forty, and ninety-seven cents to the City of Fargo as a fiscal agent for the FM diversion authority.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sherrling?
Yes.
Awesome, motion passes. Item nine, voucher approval, I did have some questions just as of today, too, as a person to make a motion to approve, because everything looks fine. Is your motion? Someone make a motion?
I know, we disagree, that's okay.
I'll make a motion.
I will second the motion, thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sherrling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak? Yes.
Motion passes. Item ten, authorized chair to sign for Davenport. Mr. Benson, that's Commissioner Breitling, you brought her down, so Commissioner Breitling?
The reason for the change is that as a part of this building project, we're purchasing property in Davenport. Ongoing right now is the process of hopefully establishing a ring-dike system for that city. The property owners within the district get to vote on that. The hearing is this Thursday, and there's about a two-week time period for us to vote. Now, we actually own property in Davenport, that's what was originally on the agenda. We're in the process of closing on the purchase for the building site, and that will be done within the next few days. Hopefully, we would then approve not only the property that we own now, but that which we will own at the time that we have to vote for the project, or property owned by Cass County. That's my question.
That's Commissioners, second? Move in second, any discussion? Mr. Benson, anything to add, as long as you're here, sir?
Mr. Chair, I think the big thing is that the county's already, you know, put substantial amount of money to the half-cent sales tax into this project, it's a great project, and we should vote to approve it.
Okay.
It's a great project and we should vote to approve it, okay?
I'm confused about the motion. Somebody clarify what exactly we decided to do differently?
The motion, as I understand it, is to authorize chair to sign ballots of Davenport flood risk reduction project for highway department property as any other property owned in the city of Davenport by Cass County.
Any discussion, Commissioners? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
And Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes, item, which would be 11 now, committee reports, please. Let's go to Mr. Wilson.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you. I'll be brief, but I do have a couple of items for you. Got a couple of items that I shared with department heads at our meeting last Wednesday that I wanted to bring to your attention. A couple of them really in, in concept and prep form, just wanted to make you aware of. One, Chair Peterson and I have discussed putting together a, essentially a state of the county report that would be delivered by the, presumably by the commission chair late in November prior to sort of the transition from one chair to a next. I think it would just be, my, my idea of it was just a high level overview, public directed, that would really summarize the, the activities of the county for the public. And that, I would just say that that was received well from, at the department head level. I would certainly take any input that the Commissioners would like to see. I've, I've been working on sort of a, a draft agenda that I can, can share with you and shared that with Chair Peterson, but would look for any feedback that you have. I will share that, that draft agenda tomorrow with you and would, would look for your feedback or your, or your thoughts as we're, we're sitting here this afternoon. Other item that I chatted with Chair Peterson about as well as department heads is I'm also looking at a, really a 360 performance review process for, for department heads. And again, I discussed that concept with department heads at the meeting last week. Really, and I had some good feedback on it. No, not a whole lot of questions, certainly no concerns. Look to have that up and running by the, the first of the year and start that as a 2021 initiative that's still in, in process. I think I've got a couple of examples that I can, can work with to get that started. But I think that would be a, a good opportunity for some feedback and ways to just do some, some assessments that we're not, not currently doing. Again, we pause, any comments there? Otherwise, I would just mention that an item that came across my desk about a month ago, just as Dr. Baird was retiring, there is a rather substantial award that's given nationally once a year for experts in the field of public health. And just reading through some of the, the requirements of this, this award is that there are different categories, and one is a member of Congress, one is a governor or a executive level state official, one is within the executive branch federal government, and then one, one category is in state and local. And so I've been, been working with Christie Ross to put together an application. I think it's, would be fitting to put together an application for, for Dr. Baird. I think he fits the criteria very well. And again, I would, that's, that's in process. The deadline for that is November 6th, but I wanted to just let you know that I'm working on that.
So a couple of thoughts, Chairman, regarding Mr. Wilson said the 360 review is incredibly important. I've been wanting to do that since I got elected. I think it's, it's interesting that we have these reviews we do with our department heads based on our portfolio, but the reality is we interact so little with these other department heads that it seems sort of silly to me to be filling this thing out, which is why if you look at my history, I've not really filled them out very often, if ever, unless something remarkable's happened, either positive or negative, and you can all assume which scenario I'm talking about. But I think it's a better thing to have their peers review them, and I think this is a great step forward. Item B regarding the Baird application, I think it's a no brainer. When Mr. Wilson brought it up to me during, it was either agenda review or some, one of the meetings we had, one of the 100 meetings we have a day, I just, the way you read, the way the application reads is like you could put Dr. Baird's name in it the whole way down, and it's just ridiculous. And I'm like, well, that's, that's the guy. If this is ever a time to do it, I'd say this is our guy. So I would encourage us to do that, and I think we're going to proceed, and I think it's a great idea. So Commissioners, any further discussion or thoughts? Mr. Wilson, anything further?
Nothing further.
Outstanding. Commissioner Brightling?
No, no credit report.
Commissioner Shurling?
Thank you. Just to quickly remind everyone that the North Dakota Association of Counties Conference begins Monday morning at 9:30, and you should have something in your inbox. You can do a test run this Thursday morning at 10:30, just to make sure you can get in. But should be kind of interesting to see how this works out. Please join us. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick.
No report, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pollock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we were visiting with the sheriff today, I, I was struck by the concerns that we have for what the state should do with regard to jail space and, and how we handle the incarcerations and, and the lack of space for that. And I thought, you know, that is an excellent topic for us to get on the agenda to speak when we have our legislative update, which will presumably happen after the election. And so, so I urge, I urge everyone, as well as Mr. Wilson, to begin a list of agenda items that, that we need to address, and I would, I would put that one at the top. End of my report.
Thank you, sir. Just a few things to go over. Last week, we had a Fargo Dome Board meeting and obviously addressing a lot of the issues regarding cancellations of shows and that type of thing out there. They're going to have a tough year at the Dome this year. They were counting on a couple of things that did not occur, of course, including of 8,000 people in the stands for the football game and a few other things that got canceled. So they're basically projecting about a 1.7 million below budget bottom line. The good news is there's going to be some reimbursement from the insurance company, and also we've got a pretty good reserve built up, about 45 million of operating reserves built up in that trustee fund. So, I mean, it's sad that it's not the end of the world. On the, tomorrow, I think Commissioner Chairman Peterson and I will be meeting with somebody regarding a development in Oak Grove, a petition request, I believe, on the 7th, interviews with the coroner candidate. On the 8th, I plan on going to the Grand Farm meeting. We're all invited to that. I'm not sure who all is going to that on Thursday. Commissioner Steen, you are going? I'm going. Okay, so I probably won't go, but we should have one of us there. Was it, it's a great question. Was anyone else planning ongoing, Commissioners?
Thinking about it.
The small group they invited, it'd be nice to have a few show on, but. Okay, we better do.
Is Mr. Benson invited?
No. Well, it was a, it was a pretty small. Dewey, come on, I know it's getting late, but come on. I got what you're doing there. It'd be nice to have a couple, I mean, because we're the bulk of the.
I'll, I'll try to.
We better, Mr. Warden, we better notice it. I'll get you the info.
Yeah, give me the info.
Mr. Wilson?
That was going to be my comment. Let us know how many plan to attend so we can notice if needed.
I, I'd say notice it just in case because it's probably going to be two or three, so just in case. On the 8th, also be during the audit of the North Dakota County Commissioners Association, so we can report on that on the 12th at the meeting that Commissioner Shurling brought up. And then the 20th, with my first session, I signed up for the Cass County Sheriff's Citizen Academy this year, so looking forward to that. As an alumni of that, it is what all of us should do. Second year elected, jump on that. Luckily, now it's starting, maybe six years ago, but we got there. It has, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Rob Plager.
Just a couple of things. October 1st was the deadline for people to pay their 2017 taxes. We had 51 properties that didn't do that, which is a lot higher than normal. Normally, we're at about 20 or so. One of those is developer, but, you know, that's only seven lots. So there's, there's quite a few on there really that need to be resolved. In some cases, they're single family homes, and we'll try to work with them and find out what, what we can do to assist them in getting those paid. But otherwise, we just have a lot more properties on there. We had another abandoned cemetery show up this last week in Addison Township. I've been speaking with one of the township officers out there that they've been trying to handle it, and they want to know what the county responsibility is. And unfortunately, it's the county's responsibility to, to take care of abandoned cemeteries. Some of Jason's people have been out there taking, taking some pictures and that sort of thing. And in talking with the township, I said, you know, after the election, maybe the highway department, the township, and I can get together and we can work out a solution. It's not a very big cemetery, and somebody was taking care of it up until a couple of years ago, but it's kind of fallen and disarrayed, so. Otherwise, elections, elections are ongoing. We have sent out a little over 36,000 ballots. We've reseeded back in 432 ballots, but we have probably about six or seven trays of ballots that we have to reseed in. And that takes a little bit of time because we have to locate the, the application and attach it before we can reseed it in. So it's going well. We got a lot of calls last week from people that they got their ballot that they never applied for, which of course wasn't true. They applied in the spring. I had one gal who told me she's never voted absentee, that she voted in the spring election at the Fargo Dome, and, you know, they've just never had to do this before. They've never done it before, so I think a lot of them are forgetting what they've done, so. But things are going well. Unfortunately, it's, it's going to cost us a lot more money. We've probably got 10 or 12 temp staff on, in, in, in the courthouse right now working. It's just a lot of paperwork, so, but so far it's going well.
Mr. Rob Plager, are you having any issues? Will you have any issues staffing or voting, polling locations?
I don't believe so. We, you know, we had an awful lot of apps, but most of those people thought it was a one day deal. So most of our people working are going to be people who have worked before. And of course, we need fewer workers than we do when we're opening all 38 different precincts. So the bad thing is, is we're open for a lot longer periods, so we're asking people to commit for over two weeks, and that, that's been a little tough, but I think we're going to make it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just one last thing, following up on the eminent domain items that you had earlier today, there was a question of future meetings and when these are scheduled. At this point, we have at least some of those items scheduled through the second meeting in November. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's going to be a, kind of a slow and steady process at, at this point as far as what we're getting from the Water Resource District.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Rob Plager? Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. From my perspective, meetings, meetings, I think we've all been, whether one of you are in a meeting with me or two or all five or four, sorry, staff, you kind of know what I'm up to. As Mary said, Commissioner Shurling said, next week is the little get together we have to see what goes virtually. I will be up in Grand Forks with my, our county commissioner president. So we'll be out, and I'm told they're going to have two separate podiums for us, so we socially distance the entire time without having to do this delicate dance of swapping between microphones, which would be fun to see, I guess, but otherwise, yeah, that's that. Respondent.
Respondent received as of October 5th, 2020. Letter from Patty Hilbert, Chair of the North Dakota Reporters Information Network, regarding action taken by the Endrin Board to refund $250,000 to county members with the refunds deposited to the document preservation fund. Cass County received $18,000, $18,470 in print revenue and $48,140.70 in document housing. Letter from the North Dakota Department of Transportation informing counties about applications for the transportation alternative program projects for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. I'll be forwarded to the county engineer. And economic progress updates from the Greater Fargo-Morhead Economic Development Corporation.
Move to receiving file. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Move and second, and any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify everything. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those both same side? Motion passes. And with that, item 12, which is what became 13? Is there a second, please?
Second.
Move and second, and all is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And adjourned. Thank you, everyone, again, for your patience. We're a little bit better than last time.
Everybody later.